Thank all of you for being here. If you don't mind, just stand with me for a word prayer and then remain standing before a word prayer. Father God, we're grateful for this opportunity again to come together and discuss the business of this town. Lord, we are so grateful for all of your blessings and we pray your blessings continue up in this town. We pray your blessings upon all of those that have given their time and life to public service and we just thank you for allowing them to do this and continue to bless them. Now, we ask that you would just give us the wherewithal to do all those things that would be pleasing and would bring you glory in our meeting tonight. These things we ask in the name of Jesus, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation of God, in the business of liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you so much. Alright. We will get down to business and we will ask our recorder to go ahead and give us our roll call and follow through with our minutes.
Oh, Jones?
Yeah.
Tom Turner?
Here.
Devin Birkin?
Here.
Ernest Purle?
Here.
Jesse Giles? Mr. Jimmy Watson-Abson. The March 4th meeting was called to order by Vice Mayor OC Holmes and Deputy Mayor Bowden, for Mayor Miss President with Tom Turner, Devin Birkin, Ernest Purle, Jesse Giles, and Jimmy Watson-Abson. A motion was made by Jesse Giles to approve the Minnesota Precares Meeting, second Tom Turner motion carried. Comments of citizens forgiven. A motion was made by Tom Turner to allow community Easter egg hunt at the city park, second Jesse Giles motion carried. There were no old business given at the time. New business, a motion was made by Devin Birkin to excel these to create an opening of the storage building for temporary housing, the fire department truck, uh, second Tom Turner motion carried. A motion was made by Devin Birkin to approve the resolutions to codify and revise the municipal ordinance agreement, second Jesse Giles motion carried. A motion was made by Jesse Giles to approve the first meeting of the limited English proficiency policy, second Tom Turner motion carried. A motion was made by Devin Birkin to approve a donation, donated fifteen hundred to the Whiteville Elementary Schools programs, second Tom Turner motion carried. A motion was made by Devin Birkin to donate a thousand dollars to the Hunter County Commission for Black History Scholarship Program, second Tom Turner motion carried. Other business, a motion was made by Jesse Giles to approve the adjustments of one thousand eight hundred forty-one dollars and thirty-three cents in charge also of one thousand eight hundred fifty-five dollars and forty-nine cents, second Devin Birkin motion carried. A motion was made by Devin Birkin to approve the paid invoices from February the first through February twenty-second, second Tom Turner motion carried. Reports from officers staffed board members forgiven and a motion was made by Tom Turner to approve Edna Hurd, Karen Turner, and James Hopst, and his library board members to replace Mark Harris, Candy Brown, and Medred Adams. Second, Ernest Purle motion carried. Notices of meetings and activities forgiven. Now, we know what the business to come for the board. A motion was made to adjourn by Devin Birkin, second Tom Turner motion carried.
Alright. You heard the reading of our minutes from our last meeting. Are there any corrections or as it relate to our minutes from our last meeting?
Uh, yeah, I found out that Candy's last name is Hastings now. I remember. That Brown is her maiden name? Yes. H.A.S.T.I.N.G.S.
Okay, thank you.
Hastings, okay.
And Angie, that was a thousand dollars, not ten thousand.
Yeah, I was just looking down right after that.
Uh, like one thousand dollars and he's got an extra zero on there.
I thought you said fifteen hundred, fourteen hundred, fourteen fifty.
It was fourteen and then...
I said fifteen, I said fourteen and a half.
Fourteen?
That was maybe fifteen.
Okay.
Okay. Alright.
Should be a thousand, thirteen thousand.
Yeah. So, one thousand dollars, I think, I think that was.
Alright. Any corrections? And if there are no more corrections, we would ask that the motion, we'd like to have a motion to approve our minutes from our last meeting with those corrections.
Okay, we mentioned, uh, make a motion that then be approved with the correction that had been made. I'll say the motion.
Alright, the motion been made and met with the second that we approve our minutes from our last meeting with those corrections, all those in favor let it be known by the sign of I, and those opposed the same. Alright, motion carried. Okay. So, communication from the mayor. Uh, I would just announce that we have completed our grant program for the park or rather the walking trail and that has closed. You know, after, after the work's been done, it still takes a while for everything to get closed as far as grants are concerned, so that has been closed out. Uh, and we would also mention to you, if you, just to kind of keep up to date on what's going on in our town and what, uh, those things that may be coming down the pipeline, we would ask you to go to the town of Whiteville's webpage and, um, and we would, you'll be able to kind of get an update on some of the things that are going on in town. We will probably have that connected with our Facebook page at some point, perhaps if I, uh, if our IT person or, well, not really our IT person, but a technical person can do that, perhaps. The video that we put out and all those things. But we would ask you to just go to the town of Whiteville's site so that you can kind of keep an update on some of the things that we are doing here on the town's webpage. That would be all that I would have in terms of my communication. Any of our citizens, I don't see anybody here but little Jared. You okay? Alright. Okay, so we would move on to old business. And of course, uh, we, I'm sure we already talked about the limited English proficiency policy. And so, we would ask that this be recognized as the second reading. This is to make sure that we are in compliance with Title VI and we're doing everything to make sure all of our citizens, um, that there are no language barriers in terms of us working with all of our citizens and stuff. If there's not something in writing, then they say it didn't happen. So, we just have to have something in place. But we would just like for you to recognize this as the second reading of that policy. We have a motion and...
Motion, how many motions you made, this is our second reading, I'm blaming this.
Our second.
Alright, so we recognize this as the motion has been made and second that we recognize this as our second reading of the limited English proficiency policy. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I, and those opposed, alright, motion carried. Okay. New business, and on the new businesses, we have bids, Main Street Festival. Where are all these with that Angie?
Um, in your packet. We only received one bid, um, we put out the fees for that one. It was, um, was as the candy sound. Um, yes, the breakdown and everything. That he pretty much did for us last year. Um, it was supposed to happen on the weekend.
Alright.
Is this a bid from him or?
Yes, that, yes, everything that's included.
So, I don't see a...
Actual number?
Yeah, actual number.
Yeah, there, they can not see it. That's all, that's all. Yeah, so, hey.
Yeah, it's okay, yeah, it's okay. I agree that, okay, I see it.
Yeah.
Is it the same one we used last year?
Same one.
Yes, so it would include all the technical services that we had for sponsorship videos and all of that. It includes everything.
We, um, had a lot of, um, comments regarding our, um, our, our technical programming. They said that it was top notch, above any they've seen at some of the concerts that they've gone to as of late, uh, in Jackson and Memphis and various places. So, everything, yeah, the, the music, the sound was excellent.
You got to come around.
With the backdrop to the stage, they thought was awesome. Everybody that appeared on, on program was highlighted on the, on the screen. So, that was, it was outstanding service that, uh, that was put together. So, this is the own bid that was received back. And what we need to do is just go ahead and, uh, have you approve this?
I make a motion that we approve the McKitty Sound system.
Aye, sir. Alright, the, uh, motion has been made and met with the second that we approve McKitty Sound's production services for our festival this year. All those in, uh, all those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I, and those opposed. Alright, motion carried on that. Okay, fire department, equipment, vehicle, um, did you have anything from?
Um, I speak of the equipment, the EMS that's in your folder. This is, um...
And, yeah, municipal emergency services.
For the sixty-three thousand, so, um, you guys approved for him to apply for the grant, so we just need approval to accept the money and spend it. And this is the body guy and it's supposed to be under our state contract. This does not have to be in there.
Okay. Right, from the state contract.
So, you'll accept the funds and spend them.
I make a motion that we accept this bid.
I'll say the motion.
Alright. The motion has been made and met with and met with the second that we accept this municipal services, municipal emergency services, uh, over here. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I, and those opposed the same. Alright, motion carried.
Okay, what is this Jack's muscle?
Okay, that's next, um, that's on the vehicle.
That's what?
That's one of the vehicles that, uh, Matthew, uh, I called Matthew to come down at Jack's to look at the vehicle. It's, uh, the vehicle that is, as far as the condition, it's in really great condition. It's a Ford Expedition, uh, the body inside is a one owner, excellent shape. The only thing is the motor was gonna have to be replaced in it. Um, so what we was having to get worked out was, um, the vehicle was actually gonna be able to be donated to us, but it was gonna have to have, you know, motor and stuff replaced in it. So, uh, Matthew spoke to Angie about it. Uh, had me writing the paper on what all was gonna need to be done to it. He put it in the paper. Uh, Jack was the only one that actually turned in, uh, a bid on it. Uh, the bid on it compared to any of the other vehicles I've been looking at, forgetting Matthew. I get weekly lists from, uh, from out of Nashville, that's the state and the federal list. There's nothing, anything coming in close to, that's gonna match that right there. Um, very high mileage, um, beat up, tore up. This isn't actually, the motor has got a four or five year warranty on it. I can't remember how many year warranty on it. There's a brand invention in it. Matthew's actually been down there to, to drive it, test drive it and everything. And then everything seems to be working great with it. So, um, sorry y'all have no pictures of it in front of you, but, I mean, very good condition.
Tires and everything, good condition?
Oh, yeah, tires and everything. Only thing that he's gonna need to do to it whenever he gets it is put license irons in it. Yeah, that's the only thing he's gonna have to do, uh, whenever he gets it.
Where did he get it from?
From Jack's.
Oh, Jack's?
Yeah.
What, uh, what, what is Matthew, I thought Matthew's driving a pickup now?
He's driving his personal vehicle.
His personal vehicle, he's talking about back working the fire.
Talking about the fire.
Fire chief.
Talking about fire.
Fire chief. Yeah, we, I meant, I meant, uh, yeah.
And this, and this vehicle is solid white, so whenever it gets its markings, but, you know, the decal's still, it actually go really well, so it's, it's solid white.
Yeah, so Matt's the only one. He's not great, but he's the only one that didn't have a...
Yeah.
In proportion, yeah.
You know, instead of, it's a three seater style vehicle, so the back end, he says, is really great because it leaves a lot of room to put gear and stuff like that. Plus, if he has several firefighters that needs to go for trainings and stuff, it gives him the capability to send them in a city vehicle, uh, for trainings, but actually throw up their gear and have room inside the vehicle.
Gotcha, okay, good. Alright.
I'll make a motion that we go ahead and get this vehicle.
Aye, sir.
Alright, alright, the motion has been made and met with the second that, uh, we, uh, go and accept this vehicle that's available to us from Jack's. So, uh, for our fire chief, all of those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I, and those opposed, alright, motion carried.
Did you drive a rich one?
Alright. Okay. Title VII Municipal Code, uh, amended reading, first reading.
This is for the, uh, fire department.
Fire department.
But the same.
Okay. Let it burn, yeah.
That's a good country.
So, it's like, it can't be burning in the country. Sounds like the old days.
Then why I bought it, man, I ain't even much of a...
No.
You get a fire chief on you.
You got the whole to the lady.
It can't be, uh, uh, burning something. We had gone to bed, somebody called and said, "Your outhouse is finna catch on fire." And Jay was like, "I had burned some track, you ain't supposed to be burning." And he went to bed and, and if someone called and said, "Your, your, your outhouse is finna burn down." Yeah, we need to open burn.
Open burning, alright. Okay, so...
So, you gotta have a permit?
Yeah, and we should be doing it that way.
I make a motion that we...
This is first reading, yeah?
First reading of this Title VII.
So, is this complete?
Open burning. Open burning.
Municipal Code Amendment, it's amended twice, you know, already on book, so, but yeah, so first reading, okay? So, uh, alright, so, um, we'll need a motion, did they make a motion?
Yeah.
And then we second, did we have a second to it?
Aye, sir.
Okay, so the motion has been made and met with the second that this, uh, is accepted as the first reading of the Title VII Municipal Code Amendment. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I, and, and those opposed, motion carried. Okay. Strategic plan.
So, we have a free plan, um, for you to review at this time. I know the pictures of the old building and we have, um...
Well, yeah, they pulled us out from, uh, from Whiteville some years ago.
Take a look at the area and there are some suggestions at, uh, near the back of what, um, or there are recommendations of what the city should do. So, you'll just look at it and be ready or probably any changes you wanna make to it for, um, a first reading or next one.
Okay, so we just want to look at it, alright? And, uh, just read, read through it. I, I think it's a pretty good, um, strategic plan for the town of Whiteville. So, in order to position ourselves for growth, we need to, and that's what they've been looking at. Yeah. Alright. It had the old, um, picture of the, uh, café that we just took it out because it's no longer available. Okay. Alright, other business, adjustments and charge offs.
Can you down to say the name?
Down to say the name, yeah, well.
Okay.
I'm sorry, church, I'm sorry. I make the most that we have out of all the bills, just...
Aye, sir.
Alright, well, I can't believe it. Okay, motion has been made and second that we accept our adjusted charge offs for the month. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I, and those opposed, motion carried. Paid invoices for February the twenty-third through March the twenty-eighth.
Make a motion, we pay our invoices.
Alright.
Second motion.
Okay, the motion has been made and second that we pay our invoices from February the twenty-third to March the twenty-eighth. All those in favor, let it be known by the sign of I, and those opposed, motion carried. So, at this time, we will have, um, reports from our officers, uh, let's see. Did you have anything else, Chief, you wanted to?
Uh, all I think I got is, uh...
You gave a clue of something, you have it.
We, uh, we're actually losing our K-9 officer. This is, it's his last week. Uh, he's gonna be starting, uh, with PBOC next week. Uh, so, we, we've had out on our Facebook post, uh, on our Facebook page, um, about the, the job opening and stuff and there's a, online, I actually created a link where people could actually fill out an application, actually attach a resume and stuff as well uh, through that link and it comes to my email. We've had pretty good success with it so far. Uh, we're taking in, as far as, we're taking in certified and uncertified, uh, right now. Um, we've actually had a few people here in town that has applied. And, uh, we're gonna start calling here probably this week. We'll start making contact with people and start setting up, uh, interview dates. So, uh, we are gonna go ahead and, I know we've discussed this before in other meetings, but we are gonna go ahead and, uh, start looking at trying to sell, uh, the K-9 because there's no layups in the department that can run, that can run that dog. And, uh, I, I won't even try, I'm really not afraid of dogs that much, but that's, that's a different type of breed of dog, right? So, uh, but yeah, that, that's all I got. So, we're, we're just looking at, at getting that spot filled and that's it for us right now.
Alright, good hit. Alright. Okay. Alright, we ready for Lyndon?
Okay, so, our Easter program, we had thirty-seven children, total of sixty-nine people. We had hot dogs, boiled pork, and potato soup, it was good. But our library board member, Lee Staley, Tommy Turner was the Easter bunny. And he's been there for several years, ever since this board voluntold him to do it.
That's, that's a dog.
But he actually, but he actually is enjoying it now, okay?
I'm in the mood.
Yes. Our six weeks yoga program is ended. Uh, we're gonna see if she will come back and do some summer reading nutritious stuff with the kids. Um, I visit, I was invited to come to the library at the elementary school and I read, uh, books, uh, for tonight, I read a book, read several books to nineteen kids, was read across American Week. Uh, I was also invited to go to Union Hill Church to talk about the library and inform them about upcoming, uh, events and stuff. And there was about six children, that's what they told me. So, I did that. Um, so now, upcoming events on, we will be open this Saturday and, um, April the sixth, well, not this Saturday, next Saturday, April the sixth, to do plant flowers. April the eighth from, uh, oh, that'll be at one o'clock.
Okay.
Cause my thing for the next two months is April showers bring May flowers, okay? So, um, April the eighth is solar eclipse, okay? So, we're gonna have some, I mean, people can just come and go from twelve-thirty to two o'clock for, for the glasses and whatever. I might do a few activities. If we have any food this time, this is gonna be like snacks type of stuff.
We have?
Huh?
Go ahead, I will go ask him.
You have enough for our glasses?
Glasses?
Yes. We have already give out thirty-one glasses.
Okay.
Starting last month, yes, we should have enough glasses.
You got more.
And we have plenty more.
Okay, good.
These glasses that we got for free from NASA.
Okay, good.
Okay? Um, our last computer class is gonna be April the eighteenth at two o'clock. However, this one, the Better Business Bureau called me and I just set them up to do it during the computer class time. So, they're gonna come and talk to people about scams. So, it, it's, and this is a lady out of Memphis. So, I'm hoping that, that's gonna be, you know, our computer class.
Okay.
So, I'm hoping to get some people to come for that. So, that's gonna be April eighteenth and she made up her own flyer and all that stuff, so, yeah. Okay.
Alright, thank you, Lyndon. Okay. Alright, is there anything for any members aboard?
Oh, the only thing I got, uh, I got concerned about our traffic coming down through town. They, they going way past the corner. So, I just wish somebody, you know, just, every night in here has my corner watch. Cause during the daytime, I mean, it, it coming down, they're going way fast in the corner. So I, I just wish somebody, you know, just every night, you know, has my, cause during the daytime, I mean, it, it coming out, you know, going way fast in twenty-nine now. You know, that's my only concern.
Devin? We'd be glad to see you back and you, you're not one hundred percent, but you better.
I think I'm better.
Alright, alright, good. Alright.
I just wanna remind you, uh, rolling out the shop local campaign to encourage the citizens of Wyville. If possible, spend a little bit more money in Wyville, cause the sales taxes benefit the cities, the citizens them. Um, so we'll have some little flyers out and people will see the shop local. So just encourage people if you can, it might be a little extra dollar, but you don't want spending in Wyville. Also on the strategic plan, um, got a couple of ideas about tourism. Um, so whenever I talk to you.
Thoughts about that, yeah.
Ideas on that, um.
So the Family Dollar and Dollar Tree will open April the fourth with a soft opening and it will have, uh, grand opening two weeks later. So the Chamber will be working with them and, uh, we'll all be up there for that grand opening.
You said the grand opening is when?
The grand opening is, well, I think that's gonna be like the eighteenth or something, but they'll have a soft opening on the fourth. But then the grand opening in two weeks from that date. So we've, I've spoken with the manager, uh, and so they're excited about this.
Do you concerned about closing the thousand Dollar Tree store?
No.
A good thing.
No, not in this area.
Yeah, I figured, uh, a lot of people say they, uh, looking forward to an important meal.
Yeah, yeah, they are.
Those who know Dollar Store really come a long way, cause I mean, I went up there last week and it was so clean.
Yeah, it was.
You could actually get through the aisle.
Hard to find there, but he got me three times a week, going to the parking lot and picking up all the papers and stuff.
Well, are the Dollar Tree prices gonna be raised to seven dollars? Did y'all hear that?
So what's that?
I heard the price is gonna be, gonna be different.
Gonna be raised. It was made from a dollar to one twenty-five, now it's gonna be raised. It's topped out at seven dollars. That's on CNN and, and MSNBC, it's national. Yeah.
I don't know.
It's topped out at seven dollars, that's what's gonna top out. Yeah, but they gonna raise, it's gonna be raised this year.
Oh.
Cause it's already one twenty-five.
It, it'll, it'll be raised.
You can just read one dollar.
Yeah, yeah, everything in there was.
Everything in the store.
I went to the Dollar Tree and they found out items in there.
Yeah. They've been having four, five dollar items in some of them for a while now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, alright, I hope they do well here.
It'll be okay now.
Yeah. Okay, so, um.
I never been in a Family Dollar, I never have.
Okay, that's different. So the Mayor Matt Tinsley charity ball, um, that's, uh, Saturday, April the sixth and Chamber has tickets for it if anybody wished to go to that. Uh, then the Juneteenth fundraiser will take place, normally it takes place in Bala at the, um, um, down at the, uh, at the lake, Sand Beach. However, that's being, uh, that's under construction down there. They, they building an amphitheater and a whole lot of other stuff, um, down there. So, um, it will, well, Wyville will host Juneteenth this year. Is that, is that? Yeah, in the park. So, um, there's not much for us to do, they're doing everything pretty much, but we're just serving as hosts to it and it should be good for our town.
We need to get, uh, a bathroom, the one, one in the women's room is running water all over the floor.
Oh, that, that need to be fixed.
Uh, and, um, the sinks and things, they, they are, they need fixing too, they, they're not, uh, up to par.
Okay.
I mean, I don't know if anybody wants to be using it, but they do need to be fixed.
And that front door. Yeah, they, they, he poured that out to me, uh, yeah, the pants stuff, they gonna take care of it. But I, I wanna come in on, on the city working for, keeping that grass cut. It looks good, and people say they, they really don't mind walking in the park now because it's always neat, it's clean, the grass is cut, and so, yeah. Yeah, it really, it really is, it's a great place to walk.
Yep.
And so we, uh, we're excited about our park.
One more thing, man, I forgot to, um, well, you didn't understand, we're working on the, uh, basketball court.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We are working on that basketball court. Alright.
Hey, uh, when, when we get all this stuff inflated by the basketball court, any, any kinda way you could get some signs up there? What are you doing with these signs?
We already talked about, uh, getting a, a board, a mess, uh, some type of mess board put up there, right?
We got that. We just need the, you know, the safety instructions.
But you can't know what you, what?
Yeah, we just discussed that one before about the rules of what you can and cannot do it. You know, some things you can't do.
So it, and I, you know, Bala has something like that says that, that the, um, park hours are like from?
Yeah, yeah, that's they have.
Yeah, sundown, something like that. Very simple sign.
Their signs are made out of wood, aren't they?
I don't know, maybe.
Last one we had in town was out of wood.
We know in prisons, they can make some.
Made out of wood.
And they can do it, okay.
They do stuff like that.
They did, they would do it there.
They made a beautiful cross for me, for my church.
Yeah, so they, they would probably do that.
Yeah, that would be good because if they doing something you don't need to do, the leases on, you know, they, they didn't know, we don't know.
They made their cross, their church, it's so pretty.
Okay. So we will, um, alright, well, good. Alright, if there's no other business to come before the board, we will entertain the motion to adjourn. Alright, the motion been made and met with the second that we adjourn, uh, for our April meeting and so we here, we have motion second, all those in favor? All those opposed? Alright, they go home.